Are we live? Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board meeting to order. And at this point, I would like to appoint a process observer. Does someone like to do it? Thank you Cindy. Thank you for volunteering Cindy. Before I begin, I'm just gonna go around and say who's present for the secretary. We have Beth Williams and Melanie LeBeck, Linda Sherwood. No one's right there. No one's sitting there. Okay. I'm just checking. Was there somebody in between the two of you? No?
No, I thought there was.
Andy Corey Superintendent, Holly Babcock Chair, Tom Solenby Chair, Bob Thompson Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Jim Grison, Principal of Middle School, Rick Barnes, Principal of High School, Ryan Bumpus Athletic Coordinator, and Cindy Van Conant, School Board Member. So, did I know everyone's names?
You got it. And the titles.
I think I should. I just, oh. And shall all these gentlemen get to sit at the table or?
They're gonna start.
And we have some gentlemen from the Police Department here. Chief Hobecky and Officer Luthen. I don't know. I'll let them answer. Thank you. Okay. Do we have an agenda adjustment tonight?
Yes, we do. Under deliberations, we do not need to deliberate on equipment because we're not purchasing anything. I did pass out a new spreadsheet that we'll go over during our discussion phase, but the first deliberative item is not needed.
Great. Does anyone else have any agenda adjustments? Let's move forward with approving of the minutes. So, we'll start with the, okay, we'll start with the minutes of the special meeting, which I need a motion by a member to accept as presented. That's Tom, seconded by Beth. And that would be for the special meeting if you weren't present. All in favor?
Aye. Oops, sorry.
So, that's, there's five of us? Five, zero, zero. Okay. And then I need a motion to accept the non-public minutes from September 3, 2019, as presented.
So moved.
And Melanie, seconded by Beth. All those in favor? You, you weren't there. Oh, you, okay. The non-public.
From that night.
Yeah.
I was there. I just had a chance to read the meeting.
Okay. Okay. So, four. Are you abstaining or are you voting? Okay. Great. Thank you. And then finally, the minutes from the Cooperative School Board meeting on August 21, 2019, with the following amendment, amendments. Page five, line 34, replace loom with loam. Page six, line one, delete the before principal Grison. Page six, line 27, replace she with he. I saw that one too. Page six, line 31, replace move with move, moved with move. Page eight, line four, replace censor with censor. And then I had one, I wasn't here, so I don't know, but I noticed on page three, very, at the very bottom, it said enrollment numbers are down slightly compared to last year with moving of, on of the prior eighth grade class. A fair number of transfer students have been enrolled, including five eighth grade students and 12 10th grade students. I felt like that was Mr. Grison's report. So, it would be seventh grade students, not 10th grade students?
That's correct.
Correct? Okay. So, can we amend the 12 10th grade students? So, that would be page three, line 50, to read 12 seventh grade students instead of 12. So, if we can make that amendment. Anybody else have anything? So, I need a motion to accept as amended.
So moved.
Tom, and seconded by Beth. I can't vote, so all those in favor? Three, zero. And are you abstaining? She Melanie, ring of the two. Okay. Was there a non-public on the 21st as well? I, I can't. I didn't see those. Well, how about we, why don't we postpone that and see if there was one? We can always vote on those. Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Now, I can move this. I guess so, but you know what? I haven't had a chance to look at them, and it sounds like no one has, so why don't we just postpone those?
Yep.
Okay.
I think they work, but I'll, we can just.
I feel like, I haven't, I didn't see them, so I feel like we should probably postpone that, if that's okay?
You were, you were absent, so I'm there, so I thought we could, but I do have notes for that.
Okay. We'll, we'll just. We'll table those? Okay. That's great. At this point, nominations, resignations, retirements, correspondence.
We don't have anything in that section tonight.
There we go. Excellent. Let me move right along. Moving right along. Okay. Next up is Chief Hobeki. I have it right here, but I, and I know you so well, but I couldn't, I don't want to pronounce wrong. Chief Hobeki, Chief of Police, is going to review the memorandum of understanding with us. And I believe Officer?
Captain Brendan.
Captain Brendan. Thanks. Sorry, I'm not aware of those kinds of things. Sorry.
He's taking no offense.
Glad to hear it.
He's freshly back from Quantico.
I saw on Facebook, congratulations. And thank you for your time doing.
Very proud of him, so.
You should be. We all are.
So, without further ado, I've been in communication with Superintendent Corey about some changes to the MOU that deal specifically with some language that will help set parameters when and when we cannot access video surveillance from a remote location, meaning our station. So, in working with Andy, there were some concerns about accessibility and privacy. I think the language of the MOU is such that it pretty much covers any of those concerns in a thorough and complete manner, while not serving as a hindrance in the event that we do need to access that surveillance in a, in an emergency or for another purpose, such as protecting safety, et cetera, et cetera. My only suggestion in speaking with Superintendent Corey was the language in section or paragraph two was a little bit confusing, so I think in, Superintendent Corey and I agreed to striking the word "only" after "and," after "and," and then adding the language "in" shall only be accessed. And then there was a minor omission of a word, which we agreed upon adding as well.
If, for the board members, if you go to page eight, you'll see that there was a section 11.1, 11.2 that was highlighted last month. We sent it off to Jim O'Shaughnessy, our attorney, for input. Jim sent that back, and what the chief is talking about is in the second paragraph, it says, "And the police department facility shall only be accessed in circumstances where there is an articulate and significant threat to the health or safety of a student or other individuals." That was the language that we discussed today. That is fine with our attorney. It clarifies it. Jim felt that by striking out the words in the first paragraph, "investigatory matters," striking that out, and if knowledge of the information is necessary to protect the health or safety of the student or other individuals. So, that was really the only question we had from last month, were those two paragraphs. Those have been vetted by our attorney, discussed with the chief, and I, and I would say, we have an outstanding relationship with our Police Department, and the communication occurs regularly, whether that's through our SRO, our building principals, or any of the administrators at the SAU. And I think the, the number of years that this memorandum of understanding has been in existence, we've encountered very little, if any, issues. And when we do, it's a collaborative effort, and I want to publicly thank the chief because he's done so many things to make sure that our buildings are safe. We're consulting with those. He has his offices visit, visit the facilities as part of their regular duty, so they know the layout of our building. So, God forbid, they had to respond to something. They already know what the building is like. And either the chief or I would be happy to address anything about the MOU or any other questions you might have around safety and security, since we do have the chief here tonight.
The question I had as a holdover from last month was whether or not the software
The software records? Our software at the building level holds it for how many days?
No, at the, is, is, is it our software that will be loaded onto the police computers?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's that.
So, when, when they load it, they can go in and see live?
Yeah.
We have a, the DVR is, I believe, we have the DVR, it's all recorded on a DVR, and I'm not sure if it's, that's cloud-based? You might be able to answer that, Bob, from your experience. Is it cloud-based or if it's? The building?
It's a, it's a cloud-based system at, at the middle school. I mean, we just upgraded, so I believe that the middle school's two, two-week window to look.
And I think ours is similar to that. Yeah.
So, does that mean yes or no?
That means that we have recordings at the building level for two weeks.
But will the installations at the, at the station or wherever those, up to three terminals are, will they have the ability to record also?
No, the, the, the protocol is that if they had an investigation that was involving our SRO or the police, they would call and make a request to come in and view our saved material.
But if they are viewing, do they have the ability to record while they are viewing?
I think the system, how it functions, records and populates it to the cloud base, depending on what the software requirements are. If you're gonna ask if we're gonna record that data, no. We would use it primarily for what the purpose and the intent, as listed in the MOU, is.
And there is actually, there's a, there's view-only access. So, for example, the secretaries in the office have view-only access, but they are not able to go back and look at anything that was recorded. They can only look at it in real time.
And it's, it's not so much a question of whether, whether I think that it's appropriate or inappropriate, it's a question of whether we have the authority to, to delegate that access. And if we do not, then we need to ensure that it's not an active option.
Correct. So, as the chief said, the intent is not to record at the police station, is to use the system we've used here? If they needed information that they thought might be on one of our saved videos, they would contact us and go through the procedures that we've always used.
Okay. But I, I differentiate between intent and whether or not it occurs, because if it's built into the software, we have to take the steps necessary to turn off whatever might be built in, and that's all.
Yep. So, I, I think it's.
It's procedural, it's not.
Right. And I think it's clear that the intent is not to record, so as we get this loaded, we'll make sure that the IT people from both the district and the station coordinate that.
Okay.
And I'm perfectly fine with it being, as Mr. Thompson said, as a view-only option. Yeah.
And if you needed to see something recorded, you would have to come here and get out.
We follow the same process we followed for years. Yeah, that's correct.
And a few years ago, we passed policy ECAD, which the superintendent has to give authority to anyone to view, or they're designated to view that video. So, in that case, Andy would have to give the authority to the Police Department.
And that's much more procedural than it is what needs to be in here.
I just want to make sure if we're authorizing something here, that we're authorizing something that we can control.
Right. I understand what you're saying. Are there any other questions?
I don't know what, question, but I don't know if anyone noticed, there's a, there's a black blip where there's supposed to be a hyphen here.
What, what page, Tom?
I gotta look, I looked at the wrong version. Page six, the first line of 8.1, students. It's supposed to be an apostrophe after students.
Okay.
There's a big black dot.
Got it. We'll get that corrected when we type it up, and then I'll send a clean copy to the chief.
Yes. May I have a few moments of your time to make a few comments? Certainly, I wanna, it's not often I come before the, the school board, but I want to echo the sentiments of Superintendent Corey. When I speak to colleagues from across the area and across the state, oftentimes, they're quite envious of the relationship that we have with the school district. I know we've worked really hard to develop a collaborative effort to make sure our kids are safe, which is the most important responsibility we have as public servants. A few things I would ask that you keep in mind is, as we move forward, if there are recommendations of how we can provide better service to the school, please let, let us know. I mean, we're 100% transparent in our operations. We want to provide the best service possible. Certainly, we have some very unique challenges in terms of staffing. We try and stretch and do our best with what we have. I think that we are extremely fortunate, and I can't say this enough, to have someone like Rick Bergeron as our SRO. In my opinion, he's the best in the state, if not the best in the country, and I will stick with that, because I believe it. Having said that, you know, as Rick nears retirement, these are considerations we need to think of, because he does so much, and we can't expect that whoever replaces him is gonna be able to do as much immediately. It's just not, it's not logical, it's not feasible. Additionally, I've spoken to Superintendent Corey, and I think at some point here, as populations grow, in the population within the school district, it might be time for a conversation to examine a second SRO. And that's something that we've talked about a few times. Certainly, there's mechanisms that will allow us to alleviate some, some of the funding requirements, whether it be through DOJ grants, which I've tasked Captain Laflamme to look into for additional staffing funds. We are also in the process of trying to plan a more practical application of active shooter training, which I hope will occur in either late 2020 or early 2021. And that would be, what I mean by that would be a full-scale scenario training, where we incorporate multiple components and facets, such as mutual aid, fire EMS, et cetera, et cetera, school board, emergency operations, things like that. We've done tabletops, which have been quite successful, have allowed us to strengthen our policies and procedures, and I think the, you know, the crawl, walk, run progression leads us to a point where now we actually plan and execute a actual scenario based on a given event. So, I appreciate your willingness to work with us and for allowing us to help you, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain them.
Goodnight, gentlemen.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you and your predecessor and, and the department for putting incredible people into our schools. As a parent, as a school board member, having interaction with them and having feedback from, from both my kids, the trust and the benefit of that relationship is tremendous. Coming from Brookline, and where Brookline is not, does not have anything in the elementary school, if you see an opportunity to maybe have some level of outreach, so that when the kids come up from Brookline to the middle school, and all of a sudden, there's a policeman in the school.
Right.
They have some understanding that this is their friend and this is their help. This isn't because there's a problem in the school.
True.
It might be, it might be a neat thing.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, and I'd have to speak with Mr. Grison. Did I say it right? I'm sorry.
You nailed it, yeah.
About what's done when, you know, sixth grade students, I know they do an orientation. We have a police presence there, where we're doing fingerprints and trying to interact with people, you know, but we can certainly maybe try and coordinate an outreach program to Brookline students who come here and have, maybe have some more intimate time with the school resource officer.
It's just, just a thought.
Sure. I'll make a note of it.
I suspect Bill would be receptive to coordinating, Bill Quigley would be receptive to coordinating with you on that front.
That's the chief at Brookline?
Yes.
Yeah. I enjoy a, a strong relationship with Chief Quigley, so.
That was going to be my question, basically, is if there is no SRO over in the Brookline elementary schools, and we start to talk about a second SRO, maybe it would be good to have the conversations with that department as well.
Sure.
To see if potentially a person from there could. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. I have no idea.
Yeah.
But I too want to ditto what Tom said. I mean, the relationship with the Hollis PD is pretty spectacular, and obviously, the current SRO is a pretty special guy, and we all appreciate him in so many ways. But all of you, I mean.
No, thank you.
My own contact with you guys at different events, I think any of your gentlemen and women could serve in that capacity. Are there any other comments? Thank you very much.
No, thank you for having me.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate it.
Great.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. We are up to public input. This is an opportunity for members of the public to share comments, concerns, anything that they have that they see on the agenda that they'd like to bring up. Thank you, gentlemen. I would ask that any input be kept to two minutes, and you need to identify yourself, and you need to identify your address.
So, I think you all know me now, but Josh Robey, Hollis, Deacon Lane Hollis, High School Robotics Team. So, first, I just wanted, you know, we've, we've been going through this quite a bit. I wanted to update everybody. We've been working really closely with Mike Siccar, Millino, it's a lot of tough names tonight.
[laughing]
And Tim Grison. And we've all agreed on a layout for the shop, where all the tools are going, sharing processes. I think everybody is, I mean, that process went really well. Everyone's really happy. I think we've got something set up that's gonna work well for robotics team and work well for, for tech ed. It's been, you know, we've sort of gotten to know Mike over the last few weeks, and it's, I think, we're all really excited for him. Many of the new shop tools, mostly the woodshop, woodshop stuff, but it's been delivered. The robotics tools are mostly on the way, so I think overall, things are going well, and we're looking forward to hopefully a really good year in our new space and, and working with Mike. So, I do, at the last meeting, a couple of the board members asked about, did we get what we expected out of the list from Article 13, and what was what? So, I, I talked to Superintendent Corey yes, yesterday. It feels longer than that.
Just so you know, I didn't get to this, but we have a new sheet.
So, so, right. I wrote, I wrote this saying, hey, Superintendent Corey didn't have a chance to get me the new sheet.
Yep.
But obviously, there is one now. I haven't, so I haven't seen it, but I think we're in agreement on just about everything, right? That, from what we talked about yesterday, the tools that are woodshop tools were moved, moved out of the Article 13 column. But, you know, again, I haven't seen it, but I, I think we're, we're good there. There's one remaining open item. We haven't, we just haven't reached an agreement on it yet, which is the, the laser engraver. So, that was something that was on the original robotics list. It wasn't a high priority thing, but it was definitely there. We had it budgeted at about $8,000. It was important to Mike, and he wound up with a unit that was significantly more expensive. He's, it's deeper into his curriculum. So, the thing that wound up being purchased, and you may, I don't know if you've seen it yet, it's back there now, is about $26,000. So, from the robotics side, we proposed, I took the eight that we originally put on our list and put that in as part of Article 13, and put the rest somewhere else. But like I said, that's, it's an open issue with Andy. We haven't gotten that resolved yet. And, you know, I, I have annotated spreadsheets, but if you have an updated one, I don't think that is necessary.
No, and I would share with the board that it has been going, an ongoing discussion, and I echo Josh's sentiments. I think we've got a great plan now. I think we're going to have a, a couple rooms. We still have work to do. And as I said to Josh the other day, I, I think, at this point, I'm, I'm at the, let the dust settle and figure out exactly where we are, and then come back, because we still have to put in the, the door.
Yep.
And we are, again, we're receiving a nice donation from the company that provided the machine, because they're gonna supply the riggers, and the riggers are the gentlemen who actually bring it in. And these are huge pieces of machinery, so that is being done at their expense, which we greatly appreciate it. And then what I'll do is continue to meet with Josh, and then sometime in the next couple of months, when, when everything settles, we'll come back with one final, final accounting. We did go over the, the same items with the Budget Committee at our meeting the other month regarding the safety issues. So, I think we're in good shape.
All right. Thank you.
Any other public input? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to principal reports. Well, I will let you two gentlemen decide who goes first.
I'll go first, you're welcome. Obviously, you guys have my board report in your packet. The, I just want to say we're, the school year's off to a relatively smooth start, so we're appreciative of that. And the instructional best practices meeting, as I referenced on there, is, is moving along nicely, and we're continuing to move to the next phase of that, which is at, creating the subcommittees and adding folks' names on those and getting those up and running. But I'm happy to answer any questions people have about what's on there.
How is the adaptive scheduler working yet so far?
It's adapting.
It's adapting. You did move it up since.
We did. We did move it up based on the students' request and kind of things that we were seeing, so we were able to split and give kids more, certainly more flexibility than they had starting out. So, we're gonna continue to, to tune it as we go along. Obviously, there are students wanting, it was wide, a lot of options there in the beginning, and we need, there's a kind of a balance that we're trying to, to maintain, so we're gonna continue to do that. I've met with student council and asked them to, to come up with a Google sheet that they would share with me, so we could track student comments and feedback, because all the feedback that I've received has been, you know, good feedback, constructive, and we've tried, worked to incorporate that to kind of best meet their needs. Everybody, you know, wants this to work and work well, so it's a process, but it's, it's definitely moving forward.
So, just to clarify for folks at home who might be listening. Students can current, can now, right now, they can schedule themselves with the adaptive scheduler for two different things.
Yes.
During one cav block.
Yes.
So, they could go see their math teacher and their science teacher if they wanted, or they could go to their math teacher for a while, and then they could go to an open study. So, they can, so they have that kind of flexibility.
They do.
That's what they have right now.
And they can change their mind on the same day, too. If they decide to not do one of the two options, they can pick another option and do that by through this.
And they can change it the night before.
Yep.
They can change it the day of. So, it's pretty adaptive.
It is. They can literally change it all the way up to the time of attendance being taken, which is before they're walking in the room, so.
And this is great, because we can track our kids a little bit more and then.
And track the use of cav block, which is something we've talked about here over a period of years, and find out, seeing how it's been used.
And teacher spaces can actually fill up, too.
Correct.
So, like, if there's 20 kids signed up for math, and one teacher, you might have to go to a different person.
Correct.
So, that way, kids don't end up walking into a room full and not getting the help they need.
Right. And if we find that all of a sudden, there's certain times of the week that we have way more math needs, for example, then that's something that we would, that tool to inform us, and we would make adjustments based on that.
Other than that, your board report looks great. Sounds like the opening of school went really well. Does anybody else have any comments, concerns, something for Principal Barnes?
No, I just, I, I talked to Rick earlier this week, but just for last week, I think it all blends. But I, I do like that you can track that, you know, even just, you know, testing out new curriculums, like with the reverse classroom and all, it, it's kind of comforting to see that you'll see if we're needing a lot more support or less support. That might help. You know, it's just one other way to evaluate.
Yeah, but lets us.
So, it's really neat to see.
Inform instruction.
And Beth and I, I think, both have freshmen, so their experience of this is, oh, okay, sure, this is how this works.
Right.
But those of us with seniors might be struggling a little bit more. I don't have a senior this year.
Seniors do terrible. They don't have this.
Right, generally.
It's the junior, sophomore, junior.
Yep.
And for those of us who don't have children in school, just wanted to understand, how
And for those of us who don't have children in school, just wanted to understand, how many students can you schedule at one time?
All students can schedule. They schedule basically on the Monday of each week. So they take a few, five or 10 minutes out of the fourth period to schedule their time for the week. But then they can change their mind throughout that, so.
So there's multiple, obviously, multiple students in each class?
Yes.
And do they get one-on-one time as well?
It depends on what, how the program, how it's being set up. If there's a need for that, a teacher can set up their own groupings of individual, small groupings, large groupings. We can have multiple groupings in the same classroom. So you can have five working on something really specific with a teacher and then 10 off that are just using that space as a quiet study. So it's, it allows like a ton of flexibility within the program. But it is, before students had a, it's a lot easier for students to walk around with a pass and kind of move back and forth. But this is, allows us to capture that data to see how it's being used.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rick on his report? Thank you. Thanks, Rick. Principal Guzon?
Thank you, Mrs. Batpack. So echoing Rick's sentiments, the start of school has gotten off on a great, on a great foot. We had our seventh and eighth graders start on Thursday, the 29th. We welcomed seventh graders the day before for a half a day for orientation. It was great to have students back in and teachers back in working with those kiddos. Our sports teams have gotten off to a great start. I have learned very quickly that this building is abuzz pretty much from about 6:00 AM through 8, 9 o'clock every single day. Including tonight, if you walk down the hallways, there'll be activities going on in every open space, NPR. We have clubs that kicked off, mountain biking, art club, green club, robotics. We have two advisors now for the middle school robotics program as of today. So that's, that's exciting. And also highlight Assistant Principal, Ms. Flamino, has begun her transition from her teaching role at the high school down here to her assistant principal position. She has begun this week coming down for half a days. Friday, she'll be down here, I think, for a full day and then full-time after that moving forward. We are still accepting applications for our one-year interim computer ed teacher opening. The class is currently being governed by a substitute with over 30 years' teaching experience. And we've also incorporated some school counselor lessons into that, as has been done in years past. And we're actively pursuing candidates to best meet the needs of our, our students here in Hollis Brookline. Does anyone have any questions or concerns or comments about other items, items I brought up?
On the computer education, I thought that that, a while back, was pushed back into, integrated into the classes as opposed to being standalone classes. Is it a standalone class?
It is a standalone class, yeah. It's one of four.
I'm just wondering if Bob can refresh my memory on.
The change actually predates my tenure. We had a family and consumer science program that in, I believe, 2011 was eliminated. And they created a course called Middle School 101, where there was computer literacy, guidance lessons, nurse lessons. And that evolved into a computer science class. And that was in place from 2012 until, till, till present.
So we're still teaching computer literacy within the main curriculum though, aren't we? It's integrated into the.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
It's a quarter class, like art and health and tech ed.
Who did we lose that created that vacancy?
Mr. Gruce. Mr. Gruce took a year leave.
So you're looking for an interim?
That's correct, a one-year interim opening. That's correct.
Sure, there's like thousands of computer science teachers out there. I think there's a statewide shortage, isn't there?
Just about everything.
Yes, so there's a big shortage in computer science. Are there any other questions on the, on the middle school report? Sounds like it's going very well with some challenges, so, great job.
Thank you, Mrs. Batpack.
Anything? Okay, let's just keep moving on then. Thank you, gentlemen. Are we doing athletic reports? Because Mr. Buck is here, so I assume we are. And he handed us something, too, that's pretty. It's pretty and I like pretty. Go ahead, Brian.
So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has about my athletics report. But I would like to focus primarily on the turf layout, which you actually have in front of you now. And I think Liz, there's actually extra copies down the other end there. So FieldTurf, which is a company that's actually going to be laying the turf on the sports field out behind the high school, provided these, these packets. And we were tasked as a committee to provide a thorough review of what we see in the packets and make sure that we're getting everything that we need on the turf field. So with that review, we, we do have a couple of changes that we're looking to implement that aren't reflected in what's in front of you. So if you go to page two of the packet, what shows you the full turf field layout. One of the things that we asked for FieldTurf to do is to extend the sidelines of the girls' lacrosse field, which is shown in the red lines. So a girls' lacrosse field can actually be a range of widths from 180 feet to 210 feet. So we, the committee, which, sorry, consisted of myself, Tom Whalen and Cindy, felt that if we extended those sidelines, it would, one, it would help separate three lines that currently overlap on the diagram. And we felt that it was important to, to give each field their own distinct set of lines. And what was the other thing that we? The wider field is, is much more desirable for our girls' lacrosse team. So I did have a discussion with our high school coach, as well as our middle school coach. And they both felt that a wider field was definitely the, the direction that they would prefer to head as far as their lines go.
Is that the yellow?
Nope, girls' lacrosse is in red. The soccer, soccer is in yellow.
But the red one says it's at 180.
Yep, and it can be anywhere from 180 to 210.
So you're going to move those, so the red's going to move?
The red's going to move.
The red's wrong in this diagram?
Correct.
Will, will it then coincide with the yellow?
It will not. Nope.
How far, so is boys' soccer the widest?
Yep, soccer is.
Or girls', boys' and girls' soccer is the same?
Sorry. Yes, so soccer is your widest field. If we add 10 feet to the girls' lacrosse field on either side, that puts us at 200 feet wide.
Is there any reason why not go to 210 if it's allowed?
Well, because we were trying to separate the lines.
Oh, you don't.
We were trying to give them their own distinct sideline on the field. If we were to go to 210, then your soccer sideline and your girls' lacrosse sideline are going to overlap.
Just from a, from a officiating standpoint, it would be easier to see the lines if they're distinct.
Yep, and for your players.
And you can go to 200 comfortably.
Yep.
And your lacrosse coach seems to think that will work.
Yeah, both, both the high school and the.
And are boys' lacrosse and girls' lacrosse lines the same?
No, they are different. So the blue lines that you see on that diagram are your boys' lacrosse lines. And your boys' lacrosse lines are set, that's a, that's a set number by the NFHS. So there's no range for your boys' lacrosse lines.
And that's the 180?
Correct. So if we were to leave the girls' lacrosse field at 180 feet, you would have three li, you would have three sets of lines that overlapped on the sideline.
But they don't overlap interior, interior, is that the problem? That they only would overlap on the sideline?
Correct. So we felt that by moving that girls' lacrosse line, it would give us a better, we would be able to distinguish those lines better.
Are they actually going to be different colors?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
That makes sense.
And while we're talking, so for the boys' lacrosse lines, right now, that color blue, based on, they, they provided us with a color wheel and all sorts of different samples to give us an idea of what different colors would look like against the background of the green field. And that particular color blue, not that it was completely washed out, but given the other options that we had for colors, we opted to go with a lighter blue because it did stand out more against the, the green. And again, that's not, that's not reflected in the diagram currently.
Well, I think it's brilliant to have separate lines for girls' lacrosse. Because, for a variety of reasons, all the things you've laid out. But also, one of the questions that we got regularly while we were debating the turf field was, will it be lined for girls' lacrosse? Because their lines are a little different than boys'. And so if the lines were the same, I think that would be bad. I think it's better to have a little, if you can make that distinction, I think that's better.
Yep, totally agree.
It's my opinion.
And, you know, part of, just the background on the, the lines a little bit. Part of, you know, doing the unified lines, which is where boys and girls can both play on the same set of lines, was really just a function of the, the man-hours that we had available to us to line all the fields that needed to be lined. Especially with the addition of boys and girls across at the middle school, which just added, it just added more onto our, our field maintenance plate. So that's, that's why we went to that set of lines. But now that we have the opportunity and based on feedback, especially from our girls' coaches, that's why we, we opted to go with the separate lines, the way we did. And it provides the, the maximum field size that you can get, short 10 feet on the sidelines for girls' lacrosse.
What's the white dotted line?
That's your media line for football. So anyone that's taking pictures or scouting or anything like that, need to be behind that dotted line. The last thing that we had a discussion about was the logo itself. So currently, the NFHS standards and the NFHS rules dictate that lines on the field need to run through the logo. So if you look on, oh, I don't know what page number this is, sorry. If you look on page eight, or the page that has the zoomed-in picture of our logo, you can see where your, your football yard lines go right through the logo. So we asked the question at our field meeting last week, if there was an option to add those lines in after the fact. So basically, what we were asking is, can we leave the lines out and then go back in? And during football season, do they make a product that we can paint those lines in that will last and not damage the turf and not have any impact on the, the rug that they're laying down? And the answer to that question is yes. They do have several products on the market that will allow us to go back during football season and add those lines in so that we do meet the NFHS requirement to have the lines go through the logo. But as football is the only sport that's impacted by that requirement, we felt it was important to take those lines out so that the logo was highlighted and, and didn't have these, these white lines running through it all throughout the year.
So you can add them and remove them.
Exactly. Yep. And likewise, you know, like during the spring, where all we play is lacrosse on the turf, there's, there's areas where we can go through. If you look at your boys' lacrosse box, the top of that restraining box runs at the 30-yard line. We could actually go through and paint a blue line across the 30-yard line to highlight that line specifically for boys' lacrosse during the spring season.
So you kind of take some of the lines off so it's not quite as cumbersome?
Exactly.
And then put them back in with this product that you can wash off.
Correct.
And that way, we wouldn't have lines going through our pretty logo all the time.
Exactly.
Got it.
So that's kind of the, the whole gist. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has or address any concerns.
So every rectangular sport will be able to play on this field?
Yes, ma'am.
And as many kids as possible will use that field? Right? Will we have uprights?
Yeah. That's part of the, I think that was part of the bid package.
Yep, there's uprights, soccer goals, field hockey goals.
Oh, it comes with stuff like that?
Well, ours will go there, but the uprights come with it.
Yeah.
And to answer your question, we intend to use the field as much as possible for our seven to 12 student athletes first. And then whenever we can incorporate community activities, we will.
Yep, and we've already started talking about schedules and, you know, making sure that everyone's rotating through on getting their, their chance on the turf.
Will JV teams get a chance, do you think?
Yep.
And then is there, is there potential for, in the spring, let's say, when, you know, there's no place to practice, would it be possible for baseball teams or softball teams to be able to get out there and use it for practices? So that even some of the kids who will play a diamond sport will have an opportunity to do some of the practices?
Absolutely.
Because they do some indoor practices for baseball.
That's going to be a huge benefit for our, for our athletes is for those, all teams to be able to get on the turf as opposed to practicing in the gym. Because, you know, having coached softball, it's, you can only get so much done in the gym. You know, when you're, you're trying to hit and field and everything else, it's, it's pretty challenging.
Will we have the opportunity to retire or rest any fields this, this school year?
That's the, so I would, I, not this school year, but I, the plan is for the fall. The plan is to, to do some heavy lifting, so to say, on, on specifically our middle school fields here to try and get those rehabbed and, and back to, you know, what we would expect our fields to look like. So that, the plan is for the fall of 2020 to start that process. And it would be to take a field completely offline, to do your overseeding and get some treatment in to, to try and bring these fields back to where they should be.
Have we been hit up for summer use of it yet?
We have not, but everything scheduling-wise goes through Brian now, so that has really consolidated the process because he has the complete plan for what field's going to lie, you know, fallow for the year. And he won't schedule anything or anybody on those fields.
Now, I'm thinking on turf field, do we have to come up with a policy for summer use of the field?
I think, first, you could, but second. Well, we have the existing facility and everything goes through Brian in athletics. We might want to just look at that and tweak it because the other question would be, is there any group that you may want to charge to use the field? Maybe they're not Hollis Brookline students, maybe it's somebody else approaching us. I'll give you the classic example, when we had to go to Salhegan to play a game, you know, there was a rental fee for that.
Yeah, they, they charged us $200.
Right.
So I think. For any camps or things like that.
Well, and you have to have certificates of insurance and all of that sort of stuff. There is, we, the, we just need to basically pull that policy out and figure out how well it covers the issues that we need addressed.
And one of the things we talked about when we presented this to the taxpayer is that club groups and recreational groups from both Hollis and Brookline would be able to access the fields without charging. We didn't, we talked about that. But when you talk about those groups making money and fundraising, like running a camp or doing a tournament or something like that, then that's a different ball of wax. So it's not just kids practicing, it's now you have national, you know, kids from everywhere coming for a tournament or a camp. That would be a different conversation. And we might want to look at that from a policy perspective.
I'm just thinking that you're likely to, I'm sure those, those organizations are looking to start their scheduling very soon, if they haven't already. So we may have to be prepared for it sooner rather than later.
I'll make a note to look at it in policy as well, to pull our policies on that. Great. Any other questions? Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Okay, great. Awesome. So that is our principal reports and our athletic report. We are up to discussion of the, we have a property discussion, the middle school property line. Seems that we need to learn some stuff about this.
Try to go over here. Just to give you the brief history, at one point, the co-op school district rented the folly building from the Hollis School District for a dollar a year. Eventually, the Hollis School District gave the folly building back to the town. When that happened, what we have here is right here, the middle school sits on Town Coven because it was actually part of the folly building. This is your folly building right here. Folly building's right here. This is our right-of-way access. This is the front lane of the school. This yellow line right down the middle is actually divides our middle school into two coffee lots. We never did anything years ago, we, we're both ours, but it's right down the middle is the coffee line. And then we have easements, both school and hu, town, both school and town, both school and town, both school and town. Those are for utilities. If you're not aware, as superintendent, I'm also in charge of the Hollis Water District. That water district comes up and actually goes right through the middle school. Back out, we actually have a trapdoor in one of our science labs. So we have an access for the town for us to get in there and do any work in the water. Then it goes back into the folly building, across to the fire station, I'll call it, and then down to Town Hall. And all those residents get water from the Hollis School District's water system.
Do you want to go to the mic? I don't think anybody can hear you at home.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'll just bring it to me. So that water system is run by the Hollis School District and indirectly me. And that's what we do, all our water testing and all that on a monthly basis. I talked to Mr. Cleveland, who is a longtime resident, former school board member, and now planning board. And what he informed me is this piece right here is 7,829 square feet. And back in 2013, there was an agreement that we would, that town would exchange 7,2829 square feet for 7,829 square feet, which is, this is the end of the parking lot, so that cornered the lot, which is swamp. And that would be done. And all the right-of-ways and everything else would exist. No formal action was ever taken. So I'm not looking for action tonight. I'm looking that you understand what the discussion is that we're now involved in with the town. Mr. Cleveland is going to ask, first of all, if the town selectmen just want to give us 7,829 square feet and be done with it. But it is Hollis to the co-op, so that's, may or may not go. We maintain all the lots. So we do the plowing, we do that. So I talked to him about the exchange of us continuing to maintain those, which we would for our schools, in lieu of giving us that. All this exchange of land here. Next step for me is I've contacted Attorney O'Shaughnessy to see what the best strategy is around property and have met with, with the town. So that's where we're at. Again, not looking for anything tonight. Mr. Cleveland is going to go to the selectmen and kind of get their input, just like I did, see what the direction they want to do. And then my hope is sometime October, November is to come back and give you an update and eventually, hopefully, a solution of how we could address this. And I'll try to answer any questions.
So when was the agreement made that Mr. Cleveland's referencing, that we would do the swap?
I, I guess it was.
Well, it was, it never really came to agreement.
Correct.
It got to the point where this was the proposal, but it ne, they never reached agreement with the, with the selectmen.
And according to Mr. Cleveland, and I don't know enough of the history, it actually went to town meeting in Hollis and passed. Now, I don't have the record on that, he was going to look that up. And the question was, from his point of view, it never got to the co-op school board to be, I'll say ratified for, on behalf of the co-op. So still learning about it. I did have briefly, when I first came on board, a conversation with then, which would have been the three town administrators ago, about the issue. And it recently came up because there's always questions around the folly building. And one of their discussions was about the folly building, and that brought up the whole property piece.
I was wondering how this came up again.
Right. So I will be back. And at least you now have an understanding. Like I said, I'll take it to Jim next and get his input from that.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions for Andy on that? Okay. Next is the facility committee update, field update from you.
Correct. And I, I want to thank Brian and the entire field committee. We have a standing meeting every Tuesday at 1:30, and it goes extremely well. I had sent out via email to the board, we did encounter ledge. That has been rectified. We ended up, they call it a hammer, which is a large tool that comes in, which was a fee that we had not budgeted for, but we have money because we, we made the conscious decision not to do the gravel parking lot. We have plenty of parking back there. And if need be, we'll have a beautiful lawn area that we can park on temporarily. So the total for the three days of the pounder to remove all the ledge was $12,200, which, being a non-ledge person or a non-construction person, I was told that went really well. Yeah. So we are officially now, I will say, above ground. So we don't have to worry about any more ledge. We have buried all our piping for the electrical, that is in. All our catch basin drains are in. If you would drive back there, you would see the pond is now in where the water will be there. We did, as part of the DES permit, do all the pictures and, that were requested of all the drainage. Those pictures were sent by Quirk Construction to Teagan Bond. Teagan Bond engineers inspect that and then write the final report and letter that is required as part of that. The, we also made the decision, it was in last month's packet, but I just want to make sure that I discuss it again because it kind of got skirted over because we had other discussions. We had a discussion around the light bases. Those light bases, to put them in, which would just be the base, would have been $64,000. And it would have locked you into that company and only that company. So if we went back a year from now, five years from now, seven years from now, we would have still been with that company. In talking with Teagan Bond and Quirk Construction, there are a number of things going on in the lighting industry, and I felt it was not appropriate for us to be locked into a vendor. So all the piping is in there, there is no worries. We have enough clearance to drive the, the machine that would drill the hole for the light bases and that. So there was nothing there. So that right now, that, that $64,000 just sits. We haven't allocated it to the field or anything. We have, the only pieces that we have left outstanding that the facilities committee is deciding on is the foundation for the scoreboard, which is a $10,000 item. The scoreboard is included in the bid price. And the reason we're waiting on that, we wanted to see where we're going to encounter any more ledge. And is there anything else that's going to come up unexpected? And then the, the road to the field from our present parking lot to the field was priced as an alternate as well. We look at that as a kind of emergency safety piece, and we'll probably be moving forward with that. But we still have time on that decision. We'll be making that in the next couple of weeks. So good news is we're still on target date, mid-November. Only over, overage is the $12,200 that we're told you about, and everything else goes well. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Two things. Do you have the ability to encumber that money that was allocated for the bases so that it doesn't just be, be viewed as available for other elements?
The, the, the way we're approaching that is the other elements are that money, just the bases, would have to come back to the board.
If they wanted to use it for something different, you mean?
Yes. So it would have to be a board and a kind of community beyond the agenda so people could come and voice their opinion.
And then the other, the other question is, in the original proposal, there was a 10 or 15% contingency? Does this ledge expenditure get, get rolled into that, meaning that we're not over budget?
Well, we're, we're not over budget from the standpoint.
I mean, even if the, are we, there's money, there was money in the budget to deal with this, and we haven't hit any other unexpected yet, have we?
That, that's correct. The, the diff, the only difference, I would say, is that the, the price of the field, because of the delays in time, escalated. So that ate into some of what I would call the contingency money. And that's why we priced the four items as alternatives, so that we could give the board. The only thing we look at, and Cindy and Brian and Rick are on the committee, that if you said to me, what's the one item that we didn't budget for that finishes the field? And that would be a set of bleachers. And we have talked about that. But just to give you an idea, I think I was taken aback when we got the number, a, a set of bleachers for a thousand fans ADA compliant with a press box is somewhere between $250,000 and $350,000. That's, that's the going rate, which was kind of staggering to us. So we're looking at some different alternatives. We've reached out to various vendors, and I think at some future meeting, Brian will give us an update. But at the same time, if you think of the majority of our fields, we don't have bleachers right now. So we're going to have a fully functioning field. It's just, if you say the one item that caps it off would be bleachers.
There is a, a company that I read about a couple of years ago, big, big business, where they essentially recycle bleachers. They go to fields where people are either tearing them down or upgrading them, and he buys them and relocates them nationwide.
You'll look at that, too?
Milford High School did it. That's how Milford High School got their bleachers. So I, I did some research last night, and I've come across some different companies like that. I just don't have anything on, on paper right now.
The Goffstown bought Exeter's whole.
Right.
Bleachers as well.
At what point in time, is there, is there a logistic point in time where you really want to make the decision about lighting because it becomes complicated to put, go in afterwards?
No, that, the, the dimensions around the field, so.
I'm thinking more about it, it, doing damage to surrounding areas by bringing in the equipment to do it.
The only thing we would do is we would potentially cause some problems with some grass that would be grown in. And, but there's no field element because everything would be outside the fence.
Okay.
So we can wait on that, basically?
Yes. Yeah. And I think the, this has been the strength of the field committee. You know, seven people at the table plus the two experts in Quirk Construction and Teagan Bond has really kind of helped push us, I think, in the right directions.
Liz? So my concern is the gravel parking lot that we've seemed to have lost in this, because I guess I would question whether we really have adequate parking at the high school right now. And we definitely don't have enough parking for all our juniors and seniors to have a parking space. And it becomes a little bit of a, you know, a rush to get those folks. And I guess I would like to, I mean, at least it would be a goal of mine that at least those two classes could park on campus. I think in the past, many years in the past, we were able to get sophomores on campus as they got their license. That seems to be a, a high, a hu, you know, a high goal that we can't meet right now. But I think that parking was something we definitely needed, and I think we're going to need it for that lot. So I'm a little concerned that that kind of got pushed to the wayside because I don't think that grass is an alternative because it's very hard to plow it. And, you know, if we're going to let kids park there during school day, we need to be able to plow it.
Right. I, I think parking is an issue. I honestly, when I was looking at where we're going to make the cuts and where they are, that seems like a logical step because from an athletic event point of view, there's, there's not an issue. When I look at it from where the 30 spots would have been, they would have been kind of isolated. And I'm not sure that's who I would want parking kind of like in an isolated area. It wouldn't have been lit, so they wouldn't have been like if my son or daughter played sports at night. You know, it's not, it's not a paved, it's just dirt to gravel. I think we need to look at, and Rick's already started this, which part of the budget process, is looking at, A, some paving, because it, the, carefully, of course, the entrance to our property is getting to be in very tough shape. And then I think from a board standpoint, when I look at parking, I look at potentially extending the, the lot that's near the baseball field. You have the dirt lot across from it, which presents some problems, but there might be some solutions as part of that. And then if all of a sudden, we're not accessing our present football field as much, do we take some of that area and expand that dirt road down there and gain parking? You know? So I know Rick has been examining a, a number of things, but I, I think you're correctly, because I do think you're going to see numbers continue to grow. Everything coming out of NASDAQ says we're going to grow. I mean, and what we're seeing in the elementary is a trend to, to make that a reality. So we'll look at some paving pieces for this year's budget or more. I think what Kelly has been asking from the two of us is more, give me a five-year plan so that we can, you know, kind of really take care of our property.
Is that other lower staff lot that's not paved in the mix, too?
Yeah, you, we talked about paving that. I would actually lose parking spaces down there. So if I pave it, so that's kind of a little bit of reluctance. I'm all, I think, generally speaking, I have full faith that staff can park in a dirt lot and do it safely. It's not something I really prefer to have students do based on prior year's experience because of a lot of different reasons that we've discussed here many times before. It just, it presents a problem. So, but you could look at having a monitor down there and who that person is. Is it a duty? If you pave that other lot, there would have to, it abs, if we ever even entertain that, there would have to be some sort of additional adult supervision that could be counted on every time that wouldn't get pulled away in some other, some other capacity.
Yeah, or, or we have to do something over the wetland, so you don't have to cross the road.
Right. There is, there is, there is space. It's around over there by the other well that's not necessarily wetland, but I don't know what. Encroaching on it and all the rules around that, plus the historic district, plus.
I'm, I'm just thinking some sort of bridge so that, because the biggest reason we ended that parking lot was kids crossing the street and other kids not paying attention.
And we have to be careful as we talk about parking because we do spend a significant amount of money on a transportation contract, and we have buses. And so as much as my heart goes out to every junior who can't park on campus, I also recognize that it's our responsibility to get the kids to school and from school, and we provide a bus. So we have to keep that in mind as well.
We could look at late buses, too, as something.
We could look at late buses, we could look at other, other alternatives to.
I thought we fixed that.
Well, what we do offer a whole lot of extracurriculars.
We do.
Kids are involved in, and there is no bus option for that. So, and when you've got kids coming from the Netherlands and Brookline over there that, you know, I think you just, there are kids here and, and if we, when I continue to talk about internships and externships and other opportu, other outside.
People in cars.
Experience, yeah, learning opportunities for kids, they have to be able to come and go. They just can't be locked to the bus schedule. So, I don't know. It's all, I've been, you know, it sounds like there's options, it just.
You're, but you're absolutely right.
Concerned when you said.
Yeah. No, we've been talking about parking. Rick talks about it every year. You know, I, I know if, if you want to give Brian a few extra million, he would move your baseball field up near the new turf field, and you would have parking right there on the baseball field. It would be done.
Actually, if we could do that, the number of balls that we lose into the swamp in any given game would probably pay for itself.
So he has already kind of, in his mind, got another plan turning.
If you guys all keep churning your plans, how about you, Melanie, if you had a question?
Yes, I was just wondering if we have scheduled games for the field. Do we have scheduled games for the field in November, when the field opens?
No. The, the only sport that will possibly be left playing is football. And that's a, that's a big if. So the date that the, the turf is supposed to be done, November 15th, is the semifinal game of the state tournament for football. So then the problem is, is that at this stage in the game, I don't know that we would have seating there yet. I think the idea is to hopefully have something in place for the spring. So that, that would be a significant challenge to, in order to host. So we're, we're banking on spring, spring of 2020.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you.
Any other questions on the field facilities update? Okay, we can move on to the middle school tech ed facilities update.
Yeah. What I wanted to do is I provided you a, a new spreadsheet. As I told you last month, my concern was that a number of the tech ed components were safety issues that we would have had to do, whether we were doing robotics or not. So what I did is I corrected the spreadsheet from last month, and we put those into the general fund. And you have a complete accounting. And as I said to, when Josh spoke tonight, when we communicated yesterday, my plan right now is to let the dust settle. I need to do the roll-up door and some other things to know exactly where we're at, because you never know what you're going to encounter. So I think we're in really good shape. I want to again publicly thank Mike, our new tech ed teacher. He's done a fabulous job of organizing that room and the countless hours that he's put into that. I want to give Tim a plug. You know, he stepped into the situation in the middle of the summer and did a yeoman's work in communicating with faculty and staff to make sure all their needs were met when they came back. I also asked Kelly, which she did, is also put the donations that were given to us, because I think it's important for the community to know how robotics has reached out and, and worked with some of their vendors to help us. So we're in good shape. The rooms are coming along. And really, I don't have any other update, but I just wanted to make sure that you had the corrected spreadsheet.
Are you expecting to move about 17,000 out of the engraver?
I'm not at this point. That will be a discussion. I'll keep you posted. Because, and I, I don't want Josh to think I'm speaker. Um, because, a- and I, I don't want Josh to think I'm speaker when he's not here. Um, but at the same time, we kind of went through the same thing with the Mas- Haas Mill piece. Where we decided basically if we're going to purchase a piece of equipment to get the quality equipment, so we weren't going to be, um, moving forward. And I think the other thing with the engraver is I think, uh, all of us will learn its capabilities. In terms of what it can do and how it can produce things. So I will keep you posted on that, um, as we go forward.
Thank you.
Has the flooring and the plumbing always been coming out of the general fund or did you move that as well?
No, the flooring and the plumbing, uh, the flooring has been kind of on our list as soon as we ever got to that room.
Okay.
It's been deteriorated.
Okay.
Uh, and please understand you'll see some flooring at the middle school this year. That will kind of be, um, what I'll say, have to get through the budget. Because it's, it basically will be encapsulating asbestos that we discovered in closets and things. Uh, so we, we just want to get that taken care of. Lock the door.
Um, okay. Are there any other questions on this? Comments? Okay, moving on. Budget committee update, I think that's from Cindy.
We didn't really touch on anything this, they're just got the spreadsheet, so this month is when we're going to be.
Yeah.
Having more of a conversation. They didn't really, they didn't really do that much at the last meeting.
No, we, we updated them on that Rick would be there to do his tech proposal for them in the coming months. Uh, we updated them on, uh, the need for Cavalier Court to have some repairs or some.
Oh, yeah.
Redoing paving wise, uh, and tried to give them a broad range. We only think from a personnel piece is we presently use and, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, I think it's point six. Uh, staffing where we're covering, I'll say, supporting regular ed and special ed at the same time.
Around that number, yes.
Uh, so we're just looking at that, making sure we capture that correctly so the budget committee. Because we do know that in one instance it falls inside of guidance and the other instances it falls out. So we just updated them on that and Amy and Bob are working on those components. Uh, and then since we're on budgets, the SAU budget committee, um, meets this Friday. Uh, we are presently looking at, um, a, a, what I'll call a slight increase, other people might not agree. Um, of three point six percent right now, and that's just one of our rounds. We haven't gone through the process. But that looks like a very solid budget in there. We are discussing facilities coordinator for the SAU. If that happens, there'll be a, a corresponding reduction from the co-op portion of the administrative, uh, maintenance piece. So what, you would see a reduction in the co-op because the new facilities person would take over the duties. That have traditionally been assigned to our co-op administrator for buildings. And, uh, the other piece we're looking at, as the board is aware, is just looking at our overall administrative load on athletics. And can we adjust that? Uh, so those would be the pieces that you'll, you'll see. And that adjustment would be a, a downward adjustment in the case somebody's sitting at home.
Is there any possibility of, uh, introducing solar power at the high school? I don't know about the middle school. High school certainly has real clear southern, southern access. And, uh, I know you've had such, such success in Hollis with that. And I just got an email today that apparently there's new incentives coming, coming through for school districts. They have solar.
Uh, just to give you a quick update, there's not a lot of data back yet. Uh, but Kelly Sealy is part of our CIP plan, had the architects and people who did the Hollis project. Tour, uh, the middle school and the high school, as well as the two Brookline schools, looking at solar, uh, boiler efficiencies, those type of things. Uh, right now, to give you an example, I believe, except for demand charges, Hollis Primary produces all its electrical needs. Uh, and I believe eighty-five percent of Hughes comes off their solar grids. And, uh, there's the capability, if we move forward with something for the SAU. That the SAU barn will have solar panels on the south side, which would probably meet a hundred percent of our needs there as well. Uh, so it's, it, it, it goes well and it's in process of looking at, uh, what I'll call energy efficiencies. Because not only do we get a much better building in Hollis. Uh, we were able to take, I think it was around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars out of the ongoing budget cost because of the energy savings.
We're going to be redoing, starting roofing projects?
Yep.
And that's the time to do it.
Exactly, yep.
Clearly, the way, um, the Hollis Energy Project was so successful is the process that, of laying everything out. And the community forums and all the pieces that were put together that really presented to the community. Because on the first go, you always have the one person who says, we need a, a year of information. Would be nice to just do the year of information.
Right, and, and that strategy, I agree with, uh, our board chair, is probably the way I would look at it. Because right now we're in Hollis Energy Phase Two. And what the community did was fund about seventy thousand dollars approximately for what is the next steps, energy-wise and building-wise. And we actually just met with the Hollis Budget Committee last week. And just so you're also aware, during those discussions, we talked about not only looking at the co-op debt. But the Hollis debt to see if there's any way we can refinance that debt and get a better interest rate. And our completion of this project in November may set us up well for a potential at the co-op level. To refinance the, our existing debt on the field for a b- a better interest rate.
Awesome. Lots of things. Sure.
Andy, you said that we would save about a hundred and thirty thousand?
No, that's what, that's what Hollis saved.
Hollis saved?
Right.
I was wondering what the, you know, what the return on investment was. How long did it take to get that return?
Well, the hundred and thirty came out of the first year's budget. So that will be a hundred and thirty over time. So basically, uh, the vast majority, I don't know the percent, of what it costs them for their lease for all this work. Will be covered by energy savings.
And we'll have all those numbers when you do the.
Yes, and, and to Holly's point, you know, I think we finished the field. And this is something that next September, we go from a discussion phase to a, a study phase of how much would it cost? We go to the taxpayers and say it'll cost this much to do a complete comprehensive study. Because the only thing looking back that I would, we have done differently for H Step Two is having the architect on board from day one. Because what, as much as the energy people are great, you also run into older buildings with a lot of code issues. So having the architect on, uh, has really facilitated that.
So to start with like a committee and a, and a, with the architect on board, right? Okay, great. Thank you. Anything else, Andy?
Oh, the, the only other thing I, I will let you know, I, I spoke with Amy today. Uh, we do anticipate, I'll say, a significant reduction in special ed cost for the co-op budget because of students aging out. And then that'll kind of be offset with some news that Bob's going to give you.
It's offset. So, yeah. So now we'll move on to the Medicaid to schools update, Bob. I've been looking forward to this all day, I have to say.
So Andy gets to give the good news and I get to give the bad news. I see how that works.
You're learning.
Uh, so in your board packet, you'll, uh, uh, find a memo from me regarding the Medicaid to schools program. Um, so as the board is aware, we participate in the Meda- Medicaid to Schools Program. Uh, which is administered by the Department of Health and Human Services. Uh, essentially, we receive reimbursement, uh, from DHHS. Um, for expenses for re- rehabilitative services, um, that are medically necessary for a student in their IEP. Um, this is a significant amount of revenue for the district. And on August twenty-ninth, uh, DHHS issued new emergency rules. And essentially what those rules did was it limited, uh, the prescribers, uh, the number of individuals who can actually order these services. Um, so in the past, a physician, a physician's assistant, or an advanced practice registered nurse. Um, or a licensed practitioner of the healing arts would be able to issue these orders. Which would enable the school district to receive reimbursement. The new emergency rule change removes the term licensed practitioner of the healing arts. Now, why that is such an issue for us as a school district is that, um, term really encapsulates a lot of our people. That's our guidance counselors, it's our school psychs, um, it is our speech, uh, language professionals. Um, so because of the limitation of the new rule. Um, only a physician, physician assistant, or advanced, uh, practice registered nurse can actually, uh, issue orders. And currently, if you look at, uh, the reimbursements that we're receiving. The vast majority of those reimbursements come through what was defined before as a licensed practitioner of the healing arts. Um, so this rule change, uh, which is an emergency rule change. Uh, but DHHS is in the process of finalizing that rule in hopes to do that, um, by February of this year. Um, will significantly reduce, uh, the revenue that we, uh, receive from the Medicaid to schools program. Um, I had the opportunity to, uh, attend a meeting today with the head of the Department of Health and Human Services. Uh, who has indicated, um, that the reason for the rule change was to be in compliance with federal law. That other states do not have such language, um, in, um, their Medicaid to school, uh, rules. And that was the reason for the emergency rule. Uh, so there's several actions we've taken. First, I've been in contact, uh, with the school district council. Uh, who's advised us that we're going to continue to log all of the services. We're not going to submit those for reimbursement. We, we really can't submit them for reimbursement. Uh, but if we, if we continue to log them and there is, uh, a rule change or this rule is repealed. Then we'll be able to submit and receive the reimbursement. Uh, we are also, um, the, uh, New Hampshire Association of Special Educators. Um, along with the Superintendent's Association and the Association, Association of Business Administrators are teaming up. Um, and have written a letter, uh, to the Joint Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, who is meeting this Friday. They are going to take up this issue, so they'll hear testimony from, uh, these three professional organizations, as well as the Department of Health and Human Services. So I may have an update on Friday. Um, and then also, this is just a, it's a topic of conversation amongst the other assistant superintendents and directors of special ed. Really trying to figure out, okay, what do we do next? Uh, because, you know, currently the revenue that we received, um, for the eighteen, nineteen school year was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars SAU-wide. So we're talking about a pretty significant amount of money. And I'll entertain any questions that folks may have. Yes, Melanie?
Thank you, Bob. Is there any concern that we might not be able to offer services?
Absolutely not.
Because you're not being compensated. There's no concern about that?
No, we will continue to offer the services because we're, um, one, we're mandated to do so in a, in a child's IEP. And, um, and secondly, it's the, it's the right thing to do. You know, what I think, what you're going to see is you're going to see a budgetary impact. Um, both for, the current FY twenty, so we're going through account line by account line and looking at, okay, where, um, do we offset, uh, this loss in revenue? And then also looking at FY twenty, essentially, we are not going to anticipate this revenue. Uh, which, which for the co-op district is in the ballpark of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So through the budgeting process, we will account for the fact that we do not anticipate receiving, uh, revenue under Medicaid to schools. That will be offset by what Andy talked about, which is we have a reduction in our out-of-district enrollment. So there will be an offset, but again, you know, we're planning for it for FY twenty-one.
And is there anything legislatively that we can do to help?
If you knew a state senator or representative. I would recommend, it's, it's hitting every district. To me.
Yeah.
Um, this is the most significant downshifting since, uh, New Hampshire retirement became the obligation of the local taxpayer.
But it's, I just attended a meeting on the Medicaid side on it for the, um, it, long-term care. And we were, massive changes at DHHS on that as well.
Yeah.
So I think it's all over and Medicaid is really struggling from a state standpoint. So they're trying to find ways to.
Right, if you recall, we expanded the number of people who were covered. Did not have any increase in revenue and we're told there'd be no impact.
And it doesn't normally work that way. I have a question about, um, it's considering the fact that it, it sounds like the ability to be able to, um. Have payment for Medicaid depends upon the prescriber. Is there any ability to work with any of these individuals? Their primary care physicians, other, you know, um, prescribers that are in, that are working with these children? In order to get to the orders that are necessary to allow us to receive reimbursement?
Yeah, the, so the answer is yes. However, there is a tremendous number of challenges in doing that. One, it's very challenging just to get a doctor at the table, um, even to have a phone conversation through a release of information. I was talking, uh, with an assistant superintendent today who said they've reached out in the last week to ten, uh, primary care physicians in their community. And received zero responses. Um, so just getting somebody at the table. Um, some of the larger districts that I talked to, uh, had indicated that they may look at bringing a, a consulting doctor on staff. Looking at the cost to do that, that there, you, we need to do a cost benefit analysis to be able to see if it's even worth us to do that. And could we actually get somebody, uh, to do that? Um, but at the, at the micro level, yeah, we're going to need to do better reach out to primary care physicians. Uh, to try to get them a seat at the IEP table. And again, there's issues with confidentiality. Parents need to agree to that. Um, so there's a lot of challenges and, and even if we're overcome many of those challenges, I don't think we'll be able to, uh, pick up the amount of revenue that's, that's, that's being lost.
I think it's a difficult conversation and ultimately it's asking one more person to come to that IEP table that, you know, probably would also have to be compensated. Or will want to be compensated, um, and it, for the sole purposes of trying to bring some revenue in. But at least, I think the idea of trying to bring consultants onboard may be where some of the districts end up having to go.
That was something I, you know, started conversation with a little bit. And to even some of the stipulations in it too, including students and fifty-one percent of it. It's not just the conversation with a provider, it's the student being present. There's a lot of different, um, interesting layers. So I, I did ask, I can sit down with Bob more, because I have a lot of same questions about how to, how to connect. I mean, I can't, it's a lot of money and moving forward to how you can, you know, find a better way. And, and also you answered another question tonight too, how other states, I mean, this is a federal-state combo deal. And other states, if they're doing this, how are they making this work and how, you know, it's, it's being implemented.
That's my question is how do other, how do other states do this? Because, I mean, if they haven't been using that language, then what do, what are they doing in other states?
Yeah, and these were all questions that were asked today in our meeting with the, uh, head of the Department of Health and Human Services. And I, uh, my sense was there was a lot of frustration in the room that these, uh, questions were not, uh, able to be answered.
Well, and that, that was something too, and I was speaking to Bob earlier today, is, you know, just as, as a licensed provider in the state of New Hampshire too. It's something that, you know, I have different associations. I've heard of some of the longer term and have been, you know, aware of that coming down the line. But it's not something even providers are as aware of. There's not much information, even looking for information, there's not. Really all that they've put out is that this may impact, that's all it's, it may impact, you know, school districts, may impact. But it, this really hasn't trickled down to even understand the impact yet.
And, and the impact, just, you know, having conversations with some of the larger districts. I mean, they're, they're losing a, a substantial amount of, of revenue and, yeah, mil- millions of dollars. I talked to both the Manchester Director and the Nashua Director in the last week and that they, they're being, they're hit, really are.
Is there potential to share a consulting doctor?
That's one of the options that we're looking at. Again, it's going to come down to cost. And then the ability to identify the providers, which right now is proving to be, uh, to be a pretty big challenge.
Doctor seems to be the most expensive.
I was just going to say nurse practitioners.
Is there any risk that because the, I guess, referer or orderer has been disqualified by Medicaid? That their, their credentials for being an order of services regardless of who's paying. Can be challenged in terms of adequacy of services or correctness of the, of the prescription?
I didn't get that sense. I know that the concern on the part of DHHS is that, um, our folks are DOE certified and not board certified. So a school psychologist is a good example. Our school psychologists are certified through the Department of Education. If they were cert- board-certified psychologists, they could, they could make orders. The problem is, is that's not the case. And so I don't think they're calling into question from the delivery of services end of things, their credential. But they are on the reimbursement side of things.
I was thinking more of whether a parent might, might challenge it.
Well, that's also part of the memo. The second page of it outlines treatment providers. And it's actually a really thorough list that, you know, people within our school that are providing those. Those are all still very much listed as, there just can't be the, be the initial ordering.
Prescriber.
Prescriber, it, it, you know, for reimbursement purposes. But they're still very much recognized in this as treatment providers. It's even underlined and.
It's even underlined, and...
So I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Thanks so much for that news. Okay, so next on our list is apportionment. I assume that's you who's going to take a look on that?
That's me. I just wanted to provide a quick update. We have reached out to Jim O'Shaughnessy, our attorney, regarding apportionment, because there was a question that came to us through the Budget Committee. So Darlene Mann and I, I initiated the email with Darlene on it, and we're talking to Jim to just look at, you know, what are our options? This is the legislative body that, that starts that process. We've heard nothing about it this year, other years we've had committees form last year. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that it is on our radar. We don't have any plans at this, at this point in time, but we'll probably have more information in the upcoming meetings.
I'd like to see us move a little bit in the direction of figuring out some sort of a committee and a plan for a meeting sometime in January or February, if we can do that, if it's not too short of a window. I want to hear what Jim has to say first, but I'd rather it start with us than be brought to us.
Proactive rather.
I'd rather be proactive. I'm concerned that if we don't do something ahead of our annual meeting, that it'll come to our annual meeting, and that is what our annual meeting will be about.
And five years ago, we did put it in January.
Right.
And it worked pretty well, so that's why we reached out to Jim. We have the timeframe, and if you recall, what we did is we did a committee from the board, and the board presented that night, and then there was a series of discussions, and we ended up at a formula.
Last year, Drew Mason, well, Jim Belanger introduced a bill on behalf of Drew Mason to try and get the RSA updated to say that a vote to not change would, would reset the five-year clock, and it didn't make it out of committee. Is there any chance that something of that nature could be reintroduced?
There is a chance. Sure, we can propose that bill. It probably won't go through anywhere before our annual meeting. So we need to work under the, under the guidelines of whatever.
We do, but if, if there is something pending, it, it sometimes gives enough impetus to pause for a year to let it resolve itself.
Yep. And I, and I will be working with Darlene Mann and Jim, and, you know, we'll have information for October.
So maybe by October, we can have it on the agenda to make some decisions, or I mean, whether or not to form a committee.
Yep.
Because I feel like it won't, but the last committee took a long time to formulate a formula, but I don't believe that would necessarily be the case this time. I don't know, though.
You never know.
I don't know. So, great, thank you. All right, so we're up to deliberations. Are there any other comments on apportionment? No, great, that's fine. Get my outline, excuse me. Thanks. Okay, so we have to see what action the board will take regarding policy EHAB. We've read this now three times. We have some comments on it, but I think we should put it on the floor, have a quick discussion, and then hopefully approve it. So I'd like to have a motion to accept the fourth reading and adopt policy EHAB data governance and security. I'm not going to say as presented, because we may amend it. Say as presented? Yeah, as presented.
So moved.
Seconded by Tom. Seconded by Melanie. So, Tom...
Should I, should I make a motion to, to amend, revise?
I want to be discussing first and see if we need to. So Tom has a concern, which he's brought to Gina and my attention.
Well, I have a concern, I have two typos, I guess.
Two typos, okay.
There are two stray S's still.
Okay.
Do you want to point them out?
Sure.
In section F, the second paragraph after the revise and, I think that S should not be there.
Mm-hmm.
And in section G, two-thirds of the way down, there's an ISO and a S that I think that S should, since it's now and, that S should be deleted. I think that's a typo.
I think those are typos. I don't think we need to amend the policy.
The question I had, and maybe I'm being hypersensitive, is in section F, second paragraph, the last sentence says, "When necessary, the superintendent, ISOs, or designee are authorized to secure resources." To say or currently, or did I, is that a change that I put in?
When necessary, the superintendent, ISOs, or designee are authorized to secure...
No, no, I just said enough to say or.
It does say or.
Yeah, okay.
Just as district, and currently inappropriate.
My question is about the use of the word "when necessary." And the only reason I have that concern is it's so subjective of when necessary is, and it could, I think it could put those individuals in a potentially compromised position where they could be challenged. We either believe that they have the authority, or if we believe that there are only certain areas where we want to give that authority, perhaps we should define that. But I would advocate just taking out the word "when necessary," and just say, give those individuals the authority to act, and trust that they're properly, properly informed to do so.
So maybe, I don't know if you can answer this without Gina, but if we were to remove those words, our policy, would it be significantly different from Brookline and Hollis', and would that be a concern?
Brookline still has a reading to go. Hollis passed it with the when necessary. And the, the, my understanding of the when necessary was it's something where Rich comes to me and says, "You need to do X to stop this from continuing." And once you do X and it's stopped, then the piece is to communicate with the board, because, I mean, some of these things get very costly when you've got a data breach, you know? So I, I, my worry would be, if you take that out, and it's in one district and not in another, and the person acts, because we sometimes confuse policies, you know, we don't look it up and realize that, okay, Hollis says when necessary, but the co-op says just do it.
Well, my point is, I don't think these people are going to do it when they don't think it's necessary.
Right.
Right, but it's okay to have those two words in there to give them the nuance.
Okay, so I come back and I say, "You revealed something about my child. It wasn't necessary. Ultimately, nothing bad happened. Why did you do that? And, well, I thought it was necessary. At the time, it seemed appropriate. Now you're, now you're saying, well, you didn't have the authority, it wasn't necessary. I just, I just view it as being a potential trap." If, if the people who are in that position don't worry about that, then, okay.
I think it does make it a little more subjective, but I think that was the goal, was to make it a little more subjective, giving them the choice to decide whether it's necessary or not. And it's also to access, or authorized to secure resources. It's not really about students, it's really about securing resources. So it's when they feel like they need to bring in training, or, you know, there's been a data breach and there's something they need to do, it gives them the opportunity...
Call the police.
Right, or call the police or something.
On, on the opposite side of that, Tom, you might have thought it was necessary, because your child's data was there, and from my global view of the SAU, I didn't think it was necessary. So I like the idea when it's, when, when one of these people that are discussed think it's necessary, not when you, the parent...
Well, you're still, you're still in the same boat. If I think it's necessary and you don't think it's necessary...
But by policy, my opinion matters and yours doesn't.
No, it doesn't. Who decides what's necessary?
The superintendent, the ISO, or the designee.
Doesn't say that, doesn't say when the superintendent thinks it's necessary. It's, it's a global necessary. When necessary, that's, anyone, anyone could have the opinion that it's necessary, and that...
Well, the way it's written, I don't disagree with him at all. It doesn't say when the superintendent is necessary.
Anyone else?
I, it's not, it's not worth a...
I don't need to hold up the policy for the, those two words. I don't, I think that there's...
I don't see how to hold it up, though.
Right. So we can change the policy, but I want to make sure it's okay with... Anyone else? No, this isn't one of you. No, Melanie? You're good? I see thinking, but I don't see responses.
Well, to me, it says that it's the superintendent and ISOs, or designee, who make this determination.
Well, he's saying, Andy just said, if Rick comes to him and says, "You need to do this," and it's Rick who said it was necessary.
But the only people who are authorized to secure the resources are the superintendent, the ISOs, or the designate. And they have to do it as stipulated in the data governance plan. So the when necessary does indicate that maybe an external force creates, then decides it's necessary, but it's still, the, the decision is still made by those three parties to authorize to secure the resources. That's how I interpret it.
Right.
I agree.
And I interpret it differently, and it's up to the courts to decide.
Oh, I guess we should vote on it as is.
How, how about we do that?
Okay, so, we've got the motion as presented, seconded by Melanie. All those in favor? Three. All those opposed? Three. So that means it's defeated, is that right?
Yep.
So we need to bring it back next month?
Or we can make a decision.
Okay, so now we can try to, why don't you make a motion to amend it?
Before doing so, can I just have some discussion? Is there a, a better alternative?
That's what I'm sitting here trying to figure. That's what I'm sitting here trying to wordsmith, and I'm...
How about we just remove the two words?
That's one option.
And then we can vote again, and it will pass.
It's fine if you do that, because there's nothing that says we can't take it back to Hollis in October, say these two words were changed, and we have Brookline next week. I mean, from my vantage point, the more we can get consistent on this one, the easier it is, because this has the potential to be a significant item that affects multiple districts at once, because a data breach isn't going to be about one school, it's probably going to be about power school, which is all I don't...
So should I just make the motion to present it without amendment?
Actually, I, I, I move to amend, what's the number?
EHAB.
EHAB in the following manner. In section F, paragraph two, eliminate the words "when necessary" and begin the last sentence of that paragraph with "the superintendent," and also to change the word "or" to the word "and."
Do we want it "and"? That means they have to all decide?
That means it requires...
It doesn't mean they're all required, but it means they're all authorized.
They are authorized.
Doesn't it?
Okay, and now we're going to argue about whether or not it takes two.
Right.
You think so?
Yeah, I think it's...
Yeah, I would say, if you do "and..."
If you say "and," I think it's going to require you to have at least two of them.
And using the word "and..."
So does having "or" authorize all of them?
Yes.
Any of the three, you may.
Okay, then, ignoring, I thought that's...
So, so make your amendment one more time.
So to remove the words "when necessary" from the last sentence of the second paragraph, and begin that sentence with "the superintendent."
Okay, so just so Don knows, so Gina knows, section F, paragraph two, last sentence, remove the words "when necessary," and start the sentence with "the."
Correct.
That's your motion?
Yes.
To amend the policy?
Well, it hasn't been approved yet to...
So your motion is to...
Amend it and approve.
To accept the fourth reading and adopt policy EHAB data governance as amended.
With that amendment.
As amended, okay. Any second on that?
No second.
Beth. Any discussion? All those in favor? Here we go, six, seven.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Be sorry.
It's fine. It has to be fun. It was really not fun until that, that made it fun.
I did send it to you.
I know, I know, I just disagreed with you.
Oh, I thought you just wanted to put it off.
No, I just wanted to disagree. I did, too. Okay. So to see what action the board will take regarding re-adoption of the memorandum of... Okay, I need that one, sorry. So I need a motion to approve the re-adoption of the memorandum of understanding between the Hollis Police Department and the Cooperative School District as amended.
So moved.
Second. Melanie, moved by Tom, seconded by Melanie. Is there any discussion on this?
The amendments that we're talking about, that was what was handed out today, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Six, zero. Okay, and I believe we have a non-public?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion at the board by roll call, go into non-public session pursuant to RSA 91-3A, colon, dash A, colon, three, two, A, which is, which one is it?
Reputation.
Okay. To discuss, is that C? To discuss a matter which have discussed in public with likely affect, affected versus the reputation of a person, other than a member of the body or agency itself.
So moved.
Tom, seconded by Beth, and roll call, starting with Beth.
Beth, aye.
Liz, aye.
Melanie, aye.
Holly, aye.
Tom, aye.
Cindy, aye.
And we're entering non-public at 7:45.
Yes, the other guys are all set.
No.